Yeah, I used to.
Yeah, it makes sense, definitely.
All right, we'll call this meeting to order. Welcome to the January 13th, 2022 in-depth council meeting. The in-depth council meeting tonight is mainly about presentations and digging in in-depth with the curtain issues as well. We will also be reading an ordinance and resolution as well. Cinda, will you please do the roll call?
Councilmember Osborn.
Present.
Councilmember Jindrich.
Present.
Councilmember Brockert.
Present.
Councilmember Freilich.
Present.
Councilmember Gordon.
Present.
Councilmember Hopkins.
Present.
Councilmember Lewis.
Present.
Seven of the presidents, you are absent.
Thank you. And will you please join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item number two is presented for city council's consideration as the second reading of an ordinance revising Title 10, Chapter 4, Flood Plane District and Chapter 5, Flood Channel, Floodway District. The Iowa Department of Natural Resources, acting as the agent for Federal Emergency Management Agency, is requesting that the city make a number of revisions to the city's floodplain management regulations, which are contained in Chapter 4 and 5 of City Code. The revisions are necessary for the city's floodplain regulations to be in compliance with Title 44 Code, Federal Regulation 60.3. Such compliance is required for residents and businesses in the city of Muscatine to remain eligible to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program. Is there a motion? Is there? I'm sorry. Is there a motion to approve the second reading of this ordinance as submitted?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion by councilmember Hopkins and a second by councilmember Freilich. Now would be the time for public to comment. Okay? And now would be a time for the councilmen, councilmembers to comment. Is there any discussion? Herein none. Councilmember Lewis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Hopkins?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Freilich?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Jindrich?
Aye.
Osborn?
Aye.
Second reading of ordinance is approved as submitted with all eyes. Item number three. At its January 6th, 2022, regular meeting, city council directed city staff to prepare a resolution establishing a moratorium on portions of Title 6, Chapter 9 of Muscatine City Code related to keeping of pit bulls. City staff and legal counsel drafted a proposed resolution that contains the following key provisions. Number one establishes of a moratorium on certain portions of Title 6, Chapter 9 until May 11th, 2022, which is four months. Number two, does not allow individuals to bring pit bulls within the corporate city limits after the date this moratorium is adopted. Number three, allows city council time to conduct research regarding whether Title 6, Chapter 9 should be stricken, revised, or remain in effect. Number four, allows any citations issued prior to the moratorium to remain in effect and prosecuted at city staff's discretion. And the last one ensures Title 6, Chapter 8 involving animal regulations remain in full effect during the moratorium, including but not limited to the enforcement of regulations regarding vicious and/or dangerous animals. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So move Gordon.
We have a motion by councilmember Gordon.
Second.
And a second by councilmember Lewis. Now would be the time for the public to comment, and we do have a list right here. So the first person that I'd like to call up would be Joni Axel.
Oh, no, Joni's with the amphitheater.
Oh.
Brenda.
Are you sure? Okay. Okay, thank you. All right. Rory Ball? I'll have you approach the podium. It's okay. You're fine. Please approach the podium and then state your name and address, and we will be giving you three minutes to talk tonight.
My name is Rory Ball. I live at 309 and a half Grandview Avenue, where it's all construction. Anyway, I had two. I, you all would recognize them as pit bulls. I'm not going to say they don't have pit bull in them, but I don't think they're 50%. But that's my, but when I was, when I was, when the cops come to my door, I didn't argue about nothing. All, my male dog, there are 15 stairs. My male dog never come off the top stairs. Why? He's chicken. My female, she's a little gutsy, about three-fourths of the way down, but never went toward the two officers. Okay? Says, well, they're pit bulls. Okay? I'm looking for, how do you know? I'm not saying that they don't have pit bull in them, but just to say they're pit bulls, pure pit bull, no. And the other thing I have to ask a question about, I'm not against nobody. And by the way, I'm not even against your ban or law about pit bulls, 50%, blah, blah, blah. I'm not even against that. But I didn't know it. No, I mean, that's the whole deal here. I was, I was totally in the dark about this. I never, and I had Frankie, female, going on four years. Razor, the male, going on three. Okay? I'm, like I said, I didn't know nothing about your, the laws, the ban, whatever you want to call them. And, you know, if I did, the first thing I'd have did, if I'd have known anything about that, was had it tested. Okay? Well, this time, they said, you have your, okay, this was the 27th of December. They told me to have them gone by the 3rd of January, and if they weren't gone the 3rd, they were going to take them the 5th. Nobody's taking my dogs. No. Because the thing I, the first thing come to my mind, how many people is going to adopt a dog going on four years old?
You have 30 seconds.
It just don't happen. I mean, okay, I'm not saying it never happens, but it just, as a rule. So, I, yeah, and I will swear to any Bible, right now, Frankie, the female, Razor, the male, is not in the Muscatine city limits. They are out of state, and I don't mean across the river. They're six, seven hours away. So I, when I'm left, you know, I, so like I said, I never got a chance to have them tested. I mean, he says, well, they're, if they're 50% or more, they aren't allowed in the city limits. Okay?
Time's up.
Never got that chance.
We appreciate your time, though. Thank you.
Pardon me? I'm sorry.
We appreciate your time, Mr. Ball. Thank you so much for the information.
You know, I'm not trying to, I said, if I'd have known this, we'll say, going on four years ago, got Frankie, about this size. First place that you go is a vet, you know, puppy shots, all that kind of stuff.
Sure.
Now, I'm not, I have nothing against veterinary, nothing. But you would, I would think that, I thought about this, and maybe it's a dumb question, and I'm sorry if it is. Couldn't the vet say, excuse me, Rory, have you registered Frankie?
No, and I understand, I understand, and, yeah, we're just allowing three minutes for everybody, but I thank you for coming up.
I'm sorry to take too much, too much time.
No, I appreciate it. Thank you so much, Mr. Ball. Thank you. Next up is Vanessa Lopez. Please state your name and address, please, and three minutes, and we'll let you know when there's 30 seconds left.
Thank you. Vanessa Lopez, I live at 400 Peachtree Street. For most of you, this isn't the first time that you've seen me up here. I'm not going to be up here stating facts or sending you any more 30-page packets, but if anybody would like a copy, just let me know, I'll email it to you. But I appreciate this first step, and I look forward to future proceedings. I ask that each and every one of you keep an open mind, respect what we have to say, whether those of us are for lifting the ban or for pausing enforcement on it, or those that oppose it. And just keep in mind of what the majority of Muscatine citizens would like, and what they believe, and what they advocate for. Going to be up here reiterating what a lot of people think. Dogs should not be based, or dogs should be based on their individuality, not their breed. Shared breeds can, you know, like, sorry, like, larger breed dogs or cattle dogs or whatever, like, they tend to have a little bit more high energy than smaller dogs. I mean, that's a given, but their personality traits and their aggression and whatnot are not based upon what breed they are or their genetic makeup. We don't judge humans as a whole, we judge each and every one of us individually, because we all come from different backgrounds, we all come from different experiences, and we all were raised different. The amount of owners and dogs that have been targeted because they have a big head, because they have ears and eyes of a pit bull, because their snout looks a little different, because they got a little bit of a bigger chest, I mean, maybe their tail implements that they're a pit bull. To me, that's not fair. Looking at me, how many of you can tell me what my DNA is? I can tell you, because hashtag ancestry.com, but you guys won't be able to tell me that. Maybe you can take a guess on my ethnicity or what my DNA makeup could be, but you're not going to be 100% sure, nor, nor know the percentages of what or who I am. It's also important to know that, yes, it's not the breed, it's the owner, how they're raised, yada, yada, but also it's important to keep in mind that bad dogs can always be rehabilitated to be good dogs. All it takes is training, patience, care, love, and the right people to work with them. I feel that.
30 seconds.
Of course. I feel that it's important to consider implementing more dog training with, like, for example, like, law enforcement or any of the other first responders, because obviously their safety and public safety is the number one priority. It's been proven that in cities where these trainings have occurred, the dog shootings or other harm from the dogs have severely decreased in small numbers to almost none. Again, I appreciate each and one of you, and I appreciate the responses that have gotten back from emails and whatnot, and again, thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Mayor, can we ask, Mayor, can we ask the people online to mute their phones unless they're called to speak?
Yep.
Please mute your phones, just so we can kill some of the back, so, thank you.
Thank you. Caleb Hopkins? Of course. If you want to state both of your names and addresses, please.
Caleb Hopkins and Natalie Hauntz, 707 Woodland Way.
Tilt, tilt the mic up, would you? There you go. Thank you.
So for the sake of getting through our story, I'm going to read it, otherwise I would speak from the heart. Our dog Cooper escaped out of our front door at 7:00 AM last Thursday, and my family was immediately out to search for him. It was unsuccessful. Cooper's 15 years old, and we knew he couldn't have made it far. I suggested to my wife that we post on social media in hopes of locating him, because it was very cold out. We thought we were being responsible owners. Shortly thereafter, we located Cooper around the block from our house. He was brought back indoors, he wasn't aggressive to the neighbors that found him, and he wasn't being a nuisance. After getting Cooper home warm, we got a call from Animal Patrol, and they showed up at, seven hours later, at 3 o'clock in the afternoon. I was just getting off work, and as I arrived home, I asked, why do you think my dog is a pit bull? And she said, well, he has that pit bull head. My dog doesn't have a big fat head. My dog's got a normal-sized head. She said, well, he does have a pit bull tail. Okay? A pit bull tail. I was a little confused, so we took the citation, we ended up getting a DNA test immediately, same day, swabbed him next morning, and sent it out voluntarily to prove that he's not a pit bull breed. I made contact with the police department afterwards to see what kind of, what's in the description? What do you look for in the animal that you're saying is a pit bull? Said, well, I've seen your dog, he has the eyes and the ears of a pit bull. Do my dog's ears, his eyes, and his tail make him aggressive? My dog's lived in this community for 12 years. We've never had an incident. He's 15 years old, and he would kill me and my kids if we lost him. Um, so, excuse me. I feel like there's a better way to handle this. Instead of splitting up families, I feel like ignoring that the breed is here and saying that it's banned is hiding it. If this dog is here, and these dogs are being a nuisance, and these dogs go to the pound, these dogs should go through an obedience training, owners should go through a training on how to handle them, and we can make this community safer in that aspect.
30 seconds.
Also, with my dog having the eyes, the ears, and the tail of a pit bull, when we get our DNA test back, it doesn't matter if it's 50%, 20%, as long as that dog is predominantly a pit bull, they can take him away from us. I think there needs to be a set percentage on that. If this ban is going to stay, there needs to be a set percentage, and there needs to be specific description of what officers need to look for in handling these dogs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Natalie, would you like to say a few words? Okay. Fay Sanchez. Please state your name and address, and we'll give you three minutes.
Hi, my name is Fay Sanchez. I live at 404 Broadway Street in Muscatine, and I did not come here tonight with the intentions of speaking, but I was asked to say a couple words, and I will somewhat repeat what I stated, I think, at the December meeting, that your community is asking you for an equal opportunity, and I encourage you to vote, not necessarily with precaution, but with an open mind, because you have an opportunity here not only to connect with your community and bring in what I believe would be a large amount of increased engagement from your community to restore the faith in our city council. We really need that at the moment. I believe that there are a lot more potential responsible owners than there are people who would become a danger by bringing new dogs in or doing things illegally. But you have a lot of families in your community that are suffering, and you guys need to do something about that. And I think that it's not unfair for your community to ask you for an equal opportunity to do things legally and responsibly, and I think it's very emotional for some of us and very important. So I will end with that. All we're asking you is for an equal opportunity. That's all.
Thank you, Fay. Rich Dwyer?
He's amphitheater.
Amphitheater, okay. Is there any discussion with council?
I have some.
There's some people that came in late, was there anybody else that wanted to say anything?
Okay. Yeah. So we'll have Freedom go first, if you want to head up there, please, and then have you go second. Please state your name and address. Three minutes, please.
My name's Freedom Malik Roberts. I live at 1836 Hershey Avenue, and I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, so I'll just say that I appreciate that you guys are willing to put this to a vote and put a temporary lift on this for a couple of months, four months, to give yourselves the time that you need to really hash out how to, who to work the kinks out of the laws, because obviously there's some issues, and I think you guys are moving in the right direction. So I appreciate the fact that the council is moving towards even just a temporary lift to try and get the ball rolling on correcting this kind of antiquated ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Please approach the podium, name and address in three minutes.
Rebecca Davis, I'm at 1716 Baghdad Drive, Apartment 305.
What was that again? Can you repeat your address?
Can you repeat that, please?
Sorry?
Can you repeat your address?
1716 Baghdad Drive, Apartment 305. We had gotten a puppy for Christmas for my kids, and she was barely eight weeks old when the police came to my apartment, and they told me my dog was a pit bull. And I was, thought she was just a mutt, I mean, you know? And, you know, my other friend has the sister of the dog, and she's just as sweet as can be, I mean, she's just a goofball, and she's going to have to lose her dog, too. And, you know, I just think it's really horrible that, you know, it's like racism against dogs. And my kids are torn up about it, they've been waiting for the dog to be born, and everybody I know is losing their pet because it may look like a pit bull. And we did a DNA test, we're waiting on the results, but now I might have to pay a fine for having her, and we just barely got her. She hadn't even been outside yet, and we just got her shots done. And I'm just, you know, I think this whole situation is a little crazy and a little ridiculous, and I feel that, you know, families are getting hurt by this, especially the ones that have had their dogs for years. You know, I just don't think it's fair. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Please approach the podium. Name and address, please, in three minutes.
My name's Max Kaufman. I live at 1609 Foster Street. I don't have a pit bull, never have had, probably don't intend to have. But I relate this issue with pit bulls. I've done some research on it. I relate this issue with pit bulls to having a gun. If you, you, in all your paperwork there, if you just replace the word pit bull with gun, if a person has a gun instead of a pit bull, that gun can be a very dangerous item in the wrong hands, very dangerous item. So can a pit bull. Setting by itself, or in the proper hands, it's just that, it's just an item. But in the wrong hands, or in an untrained hand, it can be a very dangerous item. So when you're looking at your, your study, each time you look at the word pit bull, in your mind, just for a second, replace that word pit bull with the word gun, and think just for a second, pit bull, gun. Is it a Terrier, or is it a 22? Or is it an AK-47? Or is it a pit bull? Or is it a collie? Or is it a 45 automatic? You follow? Am I making my point? Okay, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. Is there anybody else in the public that would like to speak? All right. Have you approached the podium? Name and address. Three minutes.
I know it's been a little while since I've been here. Kelsey Brackett, 2817 Mulberry Avenue. I do like, in one aspect, the comparison of a pit bull and a gun, only in the fact that guns have one purpose, shooting. They have one purpose. You shoot them to kill things. Whereas any dog, large enough, is capable of causing damage to a person or property, it has many other purposes, and damage to people and property are the cause of bad training, the cause of negligence, the cause of abuse. So it does differentiate from a gun in that guns have one purpose, shooting, hitting things, and causing damage. So I do want to take that apart a little bit, and I apologize to my friend Max for countering that. But the main thing I wanted to say was, thank you for bringing the moratorium forward, the suspension of this while you deliberate on the fine details and the remaining items before bringing forth the code change. Very much appreciate that. This is something that I started working on with Vanessa before I was even on the council, and spent four years trying to bring this forward, trying to make headway on this. So thank you for continuing it, and I also hope that my successor supports my stance on it, because I think that she's seen the details from the group here that, that show what needs to really be done, because this is, this is damaging our community by driving people away from the community if they come here unknowing and don't realize that they have a dog that is not allowed in our city limits. The issue of arbitrarily deciding that something is a pit bull is unfair both to our law enforcement, because they don't have a clear guideline to go on. If it looks like a pit, the code says, then it goes away. But most people can't identify a pit bull. You put 40 pictures of different dogs in front of them, they won't be able to pick out the pit bulls. They just won't. That's, that's tried and true. So, thank you very much for proceeding, and I look forward to the deliberation and removal of the pit bull ban. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brackett. Is there anybody else from the public that would like to speak? Okay. Any discussion with the council members? Yes.
Thank you, Mayor Bark. First, I would like to apologize to my fellow city council members for the sudden request last week to ask the city staff to review the option to pause the enforcement of the breed ban ordinance. It was a very sudden request for a very serious topic, and I should have held, I still hold true to my request, that's not going away. But if we had more time to communicate, I would have notified you of my intent to bring this forward. It was very sudden, and we try to keep each other informed, but not discuss topics, but I should have, out of courtesy, let them know that I was going to bring this forward. But sometimes we have to be agile to make changes. We have to move quickly, and this has been pausing enough. That said, I feel that the request is still viable for several reasons. One, the city has been focused on reviewing code and making it easier to understand and enforce, not just in the breed ban, but also in zoning and other things. You've seen growth through the last year doing that. So we're focused on that, so this is just part of that. So we need to make it easier to understand. But the breed ban code has not kept up with technology. It was implemented in 2003, it's been 18 years now, and we didn't have things as easily as available as the DNA test. So it was written with the rules that they understood at that time, and we didn't have that technology to the common person, okay? I do believe that, and the ordinance is somewhat vague, there's very specific on the breeds, but there's still some vague issues in there. I believe the change in the current ordinance will be up for discussion and vote soon. There's still seven of us that have to vote, okay? So let's reduce the time and the heartache, invest it in enforcing this ordinance at this time, and that's what the intent is, is a temporary moratorium on the breed ban to give us time to get everything implemented that we can and to start moving forward. So I just, one, I wanted to go back and apologize to my fellow council members, I should have given you a heads up, but this was a Hail Mary pass at 6:20 that night. So that's just my comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other discussion?
I, uh, I'd like to comment.
Yes, sir.
The, uh, the issue of the moratorium is, uh, not, I'm not going to vote in favor of it. There's all kinds of knowledge about the damage that pit bulls can do, about the effects of, and the good parts of having a pit bull ban in a community. I think the pit bull, the issue of the pit bull ban needs to be brought to a vote, a vote very quickly here, much sooner than later, a lot sooner than four months. So I disagree with the moratorium. I think we ought to get, come to a vote, uh, get this settled, whether or not Muscatine is going to have a pit bull ban, and move on with rewriting our animal, uh, keeping ordinance and so forth. So, uh, I understand the good intentions of the moratorium, but I don't see, uh, I don't see its benefit. Let's vote and take into consideration all the, uh, all the aspects of, uh, having more pit bulls in Muscatine. So I think we need to vote to maintain our pit bull ban, and, uh, we need to get it done. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other discussion from council members?
I would like to say something, Mayor.
Absolutely.
I have to say, it's like, I know I'm the new kid on the block, but, um, one of my goals was to listen. And I sat there, I've listened to both sides of the story, I've read emails from both sides. And what I'm seeing, and, and I even actually called my vet and said, what, give me some information. What are you seeing as a vet? And even per my vet recommendation, it's, uh, she gave me actually from the American Veterinarians, uh, Medical Association, which is the equivalent to the American Medical Association, which is what we use to guide medical care, is that breed-specific bans don't work, and that we need to look more at, uh, a vicious ban breed. And I think that's where our capture is. Um, I have to say that it's like, if you have a dog that, I have a Chihuahua. I have four dogs, so I'm, I'm, I'm a dog lover. Um, I have a Chihuahua, and I think probably my Chihuahua could put down probably some of your dogs that are pretty labile. Um, so, um, I just want you to know that you've been heard. I've heard both sides. Um, I can tell you that there's been many nights where I've spent, um, doing my own research, doing my own due diligence, uh, reaching out to other communities where pit bull bans were, and then they changed it to vicious ban, and that they were more successful once the vicious ban was put in place. Because the vicious ban is actually more stringent than the pit bull ban. It leads into no tethering. Uh, it also deals with other dog bites other than just the pit bull. So that is where I'm standing on it, and I thank you for the opportunity, Mayor.
You're welcome. Anybody else? Yes.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Um, it's been my experience in my life that even though you want to ban something, it doesn't necessarily mean that all the bad stuff goes away. Um, I, I have read our current, uh, piece of code, and it's, it's just very, it's my way or the highway. You have no means of appeal, no means of righting a wrong, no means to say, but, you know, my dog isn't what you think it is. Um, I, I am in favor of the moratorium, but I, I do believe that our, uh, animal control folks and our police department will deal with, uh, aggressive and dangerous animals as they always have, and they should, no matter what the breed, no matter if it's a cat, dog, whatever. So that, that's where I'm standing. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I got something too.
Yes.
Okay. My issue is not necessarily with the pit bull issue. It's, it's more, I agree that we need to upgrade the codes and we need to make them more fair and equitable. But for me, the problem is suspending a city code that's been in effect and not having due process while we suspended. That's my issue. I, the pit bull is set aside from that. If we're not, if we're not addressing it by the channels that are proper and correct, then I'm, I'm against it.
Anybody else would like to speak?
I'd like to comment. I'd just like folks to know that they've been heard. To the frustration of many in this room, folks have been heard. I think this, I would hope beyond hope that this is the one time where folks understand that sufficient time was given to this, that folks have had plenty of opportunity to make comments, and they've been heard. I also, um, believe that whatever the vote is tonight will probably make just under half the population not very happy. But for me, this vote is about the moratorium and less about the pit bull decision. I think that comes later. Uh, this, I, I, at first Peggy, I was surprised and, uh, pretty much not in favor of suspending code. Um, I didn't understand it. Um, I have taken the week to look at it, and actually I think it's a brilliant idea today. Uh, it's an, it's, it's an experiment. I mean, I'm a data guy, and I don't quite feel like I've got enough data yet, and we really don't know what this is gonna do until we actually try it. Um, now those words might come to bite me if somebody actually gets bit. Um, I'd hate to see somebody get bit because of this experiment, but that's what it is. To me, it's an opportunity for us to really see what happens. And to the voting the majority of folks, that was brought up earlier. I just want to make a small comment on that. I am a data guy, um, and I have heard from the silent majority. I've gone door to door and asked, while I was on the campaign trail, this is one of the questions I asked. What, what do you think? And it was literally split 50/50. One person was the difference between one way or the other, and I won't share which way that is. But, uh, if you think social media and the, the expressive folks in our community are the majority, I, I, I think we're gonna find it's different. And this experiment is, is a period of time where folks can come forward, still come forward. Uh, as we read changes of the code, there's three readings to that, and those are opportunities to come forward. I encourage people to do that. But I also want folks, and this is more of encouragement than, than anything else, uh, it is the expressive group that, that, uh, counts when it comes to democracy. You know, if you don't vote, that, your voice is not heard. That's all I have to say.
I do have just...
You're good?
I have one point of clarification.
Okay.
Wants everybody else to...
Yes.
Okay, I just want to clarify something Jeff sort of pointed it out. Okay. I brought this forward. I'm, I'm happy to do that, uh, but I'm not the only person that was talking about this. It was a cross-functional team. We were having a meeting at 6 o'clock, and literally it was, uh, staff, myself, the mayor, so several of us talking about it. The idea came out. It's a wacky idea. It's not something you want to do daily. You don't do this normally. But I appreciate everybody's effort that came forward. We have to think outside the box sometime, but this is not the norm to Dennis's concern. We should not do this all the time, but it is not the first time it's been done either. So, um, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't just my idea.
Well, it did pass five, five to two, so...
Yeah, yeah.
You had some backing there.
So, thank you, and so this, the voting part...
So, Mayor, could I comment yet? Or no?
I, yeah, yeah, of course.
So we're, uh, before us here is a vote to whether or not accept the recommended moratorium as per Peggy's motion, right? Because I have, you know, I, this is not a vote as to whether or not we're going to maintain a pit bull ban.
Correct.
It's to whether or not. And we have, we have a pit bull ordinance in Muscatine, so we don't need the moratorium. Okay? So I just want to make sure, because I've got other information I want to pass on to the community. If we're discussing whether or not we're gonna vote, but we're not, we're voting on whether or not there's a moratorium.
Moratorium to enforce the current code. This has nothing to do with the current pit bull. Gotta give you guys, that is still in effect, so please do not bring any new pit bulls into town, but it allows us to not enforce it as written currently. Is that correct, City Administrator?
If I may, Mayor, so I think the question is, what are, what are the series of questions that are before council? The first question was, should this item be on the agenda? That was what you talked about last week. Should this item even be brought before council? So based on the direction of council, staff, myself, uh, police department, worked with our legal counsel to fulfill staff's direction and bring a resolution forward that places a temporary, a temporary moratorium on city code, uh, the code related to keeping of pit bulls. The reason it's a resolution is because it's temporary in nature. Ordinances are for things that are permanent in nature. So that, I think there's some confusion about why, of why one discussion for this versus three discussions, uh, for a code change, and that's because it's not permanent. It's not a permanent action. Um, and so that is the decision before council tonight. Do you want to temporarily, temporarily suspend enforcement of Title 6, Chapter 9 for a period of four months? That's the decision that's before you this evening.
Thank you.
One last item too. I guess I do have one concern. I want to share that, like I said, I think this is a good idea, it's, uh, gonna be a good experiment. If passed, it would be a good, uh, experiment, we'd get real data. However, I do have one concern, and I want to emphasize, just the same as others have here, this is, the code still stays in place. It doesn't change until it gets changed, and should we come upon May 11th, and we haven't changed it yet, my bigger concern would be that, you know, we confuse people, we're not consistent, and so we really need to, uh, put a, put timing on this, and I appreciate that it is, it is time-bound.
May I?
Of course you can.
Okay. So what, what could happen is during the moratorium, council can decide if you wish to rescind the code, completely strike it, you can amend the code, which if, I think if you do keep the code in place, you'll want to amend it to be more clear and more up to date, or you can restate it and leave it alone. So those are the three choices.
Yep.
This temporary action tonight does not enact any of those permanent...
Correct.
...measures.
All right. We're gonna go ahead and vote. Councilmember Hopkins, how do you vote?
On, voting on the moratorium.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, you're voting on the resolution, on the resolution to implement a moratorium on Title 6, Chapter 9 regarding keeping of pit bulls.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon?
Aye.
Councilmember Freilich?
Based on my concerns, nay.
Councilmember Brockert?
Aye.
Councilmember Gindrich?
Nay.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution adopted with five ayes and two nays. Next item is item four. At this time, I'll have the city administrator, Carol Webb. She has a presentation for us for the Riverfront Amphitheater.
Okay, I have to, I'm gonna do the PowerPoint from here, um, or I can't see behind me, so my, um, co-pilot over there is gonna run the PowerPoint. Um, and, uh, you know, um, we'll go through our PowerPoint presentation, and then, um, I have the committee, members of the committee are here, and so I'd like to acknowledge them, and, you know, they may, they may wish to say something, but we can...
Okay. Thank you.
Hold on just a minute.
Are you gonna text me when you're ready, or?
I, no, I'm not. I have these security protocols I have to follow over here.
Dual authentication.
Okay, so Brian and I are here this evening to talk about what I think is an exciting topic, which is the Riverfront Amphitheater. So, so what we're, what we're, uh, going to do this evening is update you on the design. So we did, uh, recently engage in developing a concept essentially of the amphitheater, and we're going to give you a little bit of information on what's upcoming in the public process, uh, which includes some public outreach and a capital campaign. So we're not really seeking specific direction from you tonight. It's really informational in nature, but we, of course, welcome any questions city council might have on the process for how we developed the design and, and any of the other items we present tonight. Um, and of course, we welcome your feedback as well. So I'd like to start with a slide like this, just to show you essentially why we're, why are we even talking about this? And, uh, city council adopted a strategic plan a year ago, and this council that was recently seated reaffirmed that strategic plan, and there are two priority outcomes that are listed in that plan, and those are, um, developing a vibrant community and a healthy community. So, uh, strategies under the, uh, a prime, uh, priority of vibrant community were continuing to implement components of the Riverfront Master Plan, of which the Riverfront Amphitheater is a part of. Um, and then also to create quality places that people want to work, live and play, and that contribute to community health, happiness and well-being, which I believe this facility would do that. Uh, around healthy community, we'd want to continue to invest in and develop recreational and culture, cultural amenities that contribute to a healthy community and attract visitors, and this would be a primary attraction in that sense. So I'm new to Muscatine. I've been here 18 months. Um, and I, I know in the time I've been here, whenever you talk to somebody in Muscatine about what they love about the community, with, almost inevitably, somebody will say "the riverfront." The riverfront is the, I think, one of the key assets and attractions in the community. And I think the, um, you know, our forefathers, past councils and community leaders identified, uh, long ago that that was true. And really, probably for many years before, but at least as far back as the early 1990s, the city has been investing in redeveloping the riverfront. And I know in the early 90s, um, there, there was a rail switchyard, I think, on the riverfront, and that was relocated, which really opened the riverfront up as a community asset. And this is just a picture of what it looked like then and what it looks like today. Andrew Fangman took these photos, and he took that photo from the exact same spot. So that's the exact same location, um, I guess, what is that, 20, 30 years later? Um, there was a Riverside Master Plan that was developed in late 1990s, even as far back as that time, an amphitheater was included in the master plan. Entertainment facilities, a plaza where the community could gather as a gathering space, uh, pedestrian improvements and boating were attractions that were included in that plan. Out of that plan grew some significant riverfront development projects, what the community has called Pearls of Progress, Progress Projects, which has included trails, a variety of recreation, improvements on a boat launch, the clamor statue with every, which everybody knows. And that picture there, um, the top picture is, um, the Riverview Center before it was updated and refurbished. Probably everybody's nodding their heads, so you probably remember that. And what it looks like today, which is that it's a fabulous, beautiful amenity today. And I would know all of those projects. None of them came from just city funds. None of them came from just private donors. None of them came from just grants. It was a collaboration of all of those people invested in the community, willing to, um, you know, put their dollars, uh, in these assets, and, and did. And now we're bearing the fruit of that. Of course, Mississippi Drive itself was a project that was, I think, completed a couple, like 2018, Brian? Is that about right? Um, and that, that was a key part of, of the whole riverfront development. Um, it included new roadway, utilities and a complete street or streetscape components. It was really about connectivity across the riverfront and really help us align, that project aligned with the goals that are listed in the Riverside Park Master Plan. We've done a lot of planning around the riverfront. In 2012, the city developed its comprehensive plan, which cities usually do about every 10 years, so we're, we're due for one. But in that plan, there was a goal for Riverside Ban Shell, which is just another way to say amphitheater, um, and there was a very explicit goal in that plan around developing this. And then, uh, the Riverside Park Master Plan was updated. It was originally done in 97, updated in 2017. And again, that goal was reiterated to create a performance and entertainment venue within the park and increase those riverfront amenities. So basically, I went down that trip of memory, like, just to know that it's been a long time coming. This has been a part of the community's discussion and future for quite some time, and we're at the point now where we're helping realize it and bring it to fruition. Um, and so, in recognition of that, in early 2021, Brian, uh, led this along with Pat Lynch and his team... Brian led this along with Pat Lynch and his team. We solicited proposals to develop a conceptual design for the Riverfront Amphitheater. We engaged RDG Designs in that work. And I think made a good choice. They've done a great job with that. We awarded the contract in July. And we began meeting as a steering committee. We assembled a steering team, which I've got a slide to recognize everybody who's participated in that. But really, a cross-functional group of city staff, citizens, amphitheater user groups, and elected officials, who met, I don't know, maybe seven, six, seven, eight times, something like that, through, from August to December, to collaboratively develop the design. We started sort of broad, broad and kind of worked in on a funnel with vision and goals. We looked at other amphitheaters. We looked at a whole series of pictures of what we thought elements would fit with Muscatine, what wouldn't. We talked about who would we draw to the theater? Would it be, would it be just local? Would it be regional? Would it be, you know, national? You know, we talked about the audience. We talked about how we might operate, fund the operation and maintenance of such a facility and what possible revenue and income sources would be. We looked at how we might program the site. We estimate, made estimates of probable cost, which are very difficult at a conceptual stage. But we wanted to get a rough range anyway. And then, we started talking about, okay, now that we have a design, what would our capital campaign look like? So this is a aerial, I guess? Maybe you could talk through this, Brian?
This is an aerial, I guess?
No.
So, this is a, this is the concept from the air, looking at the, the concept, actually, of where this would lay out potentially and what it could look like as far as just as a bird's eye view of. And it doesn't really, it's not expanded out far enough to kind of get the context of where. But if it's, it's kind of by the basketball courts, where the basketball courts are now, is, it's in that general vicinity. So that's
Yeah. And so that number three in the middle is the main stage, what we typically think is the main component of the amphitheater. The way that it's designed, it would have two sides, which actually, I think, was part of the very original idea. One which would be a main stage. And the other would be like a celebration stage, a family stage, so that we could accommodate large-scale events. But also, the people right here in our own community to take advantage of a facility like this. The, the way they design these are pretty amazing. You know, all the paths that you hear, you see here allow circulation of people and equipment and all of those kinds of things. The two side pieces there are sort of, what would you call those priorities? Seat seating boxes?
Yeah, you could call them like that, or VIP seating or areas if you, you know, if we want to do that, yeah.
And then the structure, number five, I guess, off to the side, would be an area for like a ready room for, for performers and could potentially be some meeting space and those kind of things. So, sort of, you know, I think, a pretty grand vision of the area. Want to skip?
I just went to the picture.
Yeah, that's right. So this is, this is a illustrative image of that.
Yeah.
And you can see the, the canopy is sort of reminiscent of the river and sort of the environment there. You know, we would look at having a screen in the back where you could pull down and, you know, block the sun or view or whatever you need. We'd have good lighting and sound in the area for different types of performances. And this is just another view. This is, you know, similar type of performance, special performance, yeah.
Basically, what we've got is a series of artist renderings of what it could look like upon construction with, you know, crowds and things gathered. So there's just, there's a series of these showing different events, different size events, from your major concert to, you know, an open-mic night guy with a guitar type of thing. There's a possibility, I don't know if they're on here or not, for, for like a wedding on the small stage. This is the, this is the artist rendering of what it could look like during a festival, like, say, a food truck fight or something like that, where you've got the, the lawn, part of the lawn in the, towards the back, you can put your tents or your food trucks, whatever. And then you still have that, that lawn space in the front for the, for the seating for people that are, that are viewing the acts or listening to the shows. So, there's quite a few possibilities here of how we can utilize this space with this particular type of amphitheater. Just another artist rendering with the bridge in the background, kind of a bird's eye view again, looking upstream at this point, with an event, you know, kind of sketched on the stage. These are just, you know, concept views of what it could be and how cool it could look once it's completed. Similarly, just, just more photos and renderings of, of, you know, the possibilities. This one kind of shows more of the wave-type structure on the canopy. That was the group like that, just because it was kind of emulating the river and the waves. And it just kind of brings the, the nature into the, into the area.
So, next steps are, we will have some community meetings, showing what the concept will be and get some feedback on that. Some, maybe some specific elements, sort of what people, you know, really excite some about it. What kind of, kind of events would they like to see at the, at the facility? Those kinds of things. Of course, fundraising, as I mentioned. Projects like this don't happen with just city funds. We have to reach out to our community and to others to leverage other funding opportunities to, you know, realize a vision like this. And then we'll also be thinking about, for a facility like this, how would the event be programmed and scheduled? We did talk to a couple of similar types of facilities and how they go about ensuring that they're, they can hold events that maintain the O and M, the operation and maintenance of the facility, while still allowing their community to utilize, you know, the space. And so, we'll be thinking a lot more about that, too. And then the steering committee, this is just a list of who participated. I, you know, I know Joni Axel is here, as well as Brenda. Rich Dwyer's here. He's serving on our steering committee. Brian Dollinger, I wanted to recognize him because he's with the Symphony. And he played a really important part in helping us understand, like, how to size the space so that we would fit, you know, fit a need of that type. Brenda and, Brenda and Chris, Chris Bortu, they host Almost Friday Fest. And so they were very important in the discussions of understanding sort of what their needs might be and things that I certainly wouldn't think about. The Chamber participated as well. And of course, Peggy. So, you know, I don't know if Peggy has anything to add, what we went over. We also had our park staff at the table, too, because this is in a park. And they would be part of maintaining it and maybe even programming it. So they were a key part of it as well.
Yeah, just real quick. I mean, RDJ, as a partner in this, was a great selection because their sessions, as they walked us through this, was very educational. Because we started all over the board and they kept drilling in. And then listening to Brenda and Chris on the Almost Friday Fest as to one of the big users, I mean, or the Symphony. You learn a lot about what size a stage should be. So they guided us through that. And it, it was great. It's going to be a great asset. And I also like that we have a celebration side for smaller events. And we'll still keep that Muscatine feel. So, I mean, it was, they're a great partner. They were awesome. And working with this team was wonderful, so.
So again, it's informational. But if you have any questions or feedback, we're happy to entertain those. Or if you'd like to hear from anybody on the committee, welcome to do that, too.
I think, may I speak?
Absolutely.
I think this is a great idea. I have great memories of when I lived in Muscatine, of, you know, coming down. And, I mean, even when we used to have Stiles Downtown. So, this gets me very excited. I can tell you, at one point, we moved to Sioux City, Iowa. And on Sunday, they had Family Night where they brought the Symphony in. And so every Sunday, they had the Symphony. It was just an hour-long event. And I think the Symphony up there was using it for practice time. But everybody got to enjoy it. And then 4th of July came, and then they did 18, 12 overtures. It makes great memories. It's great for family. I'm really looking forward to this. I can remember as a kid, here in Muscatine, they actually had the Symphony come down the, the river. And it was on a barge and they played. And I can remember that as a child. And it was a very great experience and great for culture. So, I really like this idea.
Sure? You want, you'll need to come up.
Sorry, Brenda.
Yes, gotta go up.
Come on, Brenda.
Yeah, you do.
So this is Brenda Christiansen. I don't know if you know Brenda, but she's a, I guess, one of the, one of the directors, I guess, of Keep Muscatine Beautiful and, and very active in the community as far as events, so.
Well, as he's paging through those.
You stop me when you're ready. That's pretty much it, so.
Go towards the end.
That one?
Nope, one more, I think. Wow, whatever. How about this one, right here?
Okay.
Oh, I talk loud. The one thing I do want to point out is, as we went through this process as a team, there were a couple of things we really, really considered. We did not want to block the view of the Riverfront. And you'll notice, it's very open. It's, there's no sides to it, that kind of thing. We wanted to make sure we left the view there. That's one of the things that people comment about a lot. And we really wanted two sides. It's not something that's normal at most amphitheaters, but it was something we really pushed hard on is, we want a smaller side for more intimate things, like a wedding or a small dance recital. And then we want the larger size to do bigger things, like an Almost Friday Fest band or the full Symphony, that kind of thing. So, I just wanted to point those couple of things out to make sure everybody noticed them. Because we did put a lot of thought into this, too. Try and make sure it was an asset to the Riverfront, not a white elephant down there. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, all I have to say is wow. I mean, that, that just looks absolutely amazing. And what a innovative and well-thought-out. So, great job to the team, most definitely, so.
I think that's it.
Next item? Okay. Thank you, Brian.
Yep.
And you might, maybe I'll have you stay up there.
I'll just be here, yeah.
All right. We're going to have Carol Webb and Brian Steiman give a presentation on findings of the watershed study.
I think this one's all Brian.
Yeah, that's, this one's mine. Okay. So, this is going to be a summary of the Lake Shed, or Lake Shed, Lake Park Boulevard watershed report. Hopefully, you all had a chance to, to read it and go through it. This was, this is for presentation and informational purposes only at this time. Although there are a couple of options that we can discuss, either now or at a future meeting. Past councils have requested us to look into the flooding issues at Lake Park and Second Avenue. When it rains hard there, we have flooding issues that are pretty well-known. And so, we contracted with Watersmith Engineering to do a report for us. And I'll do the summary of this report. So, it kind of just hit the highlights. We've been here for a while. And I'm sure nobody wants to stay too much later. So we'll just, I'll kind of keep this light and go. So I'm going to do a quick overview of the issues. Well, I'll briefly discuss the watershed assessment and the hydrology report. There are some cost estimates for some of the alternatives that were presented. And then I'll give a summary and our questions. I do have Brad Roeth from Watersmith Engineering, who wrote the report here, if you have any questions for him. And Pat Lynch, our city engineer, is also here. So if you, if you stump me, they can hopefully help me out. So, the overview of the issue is that, like I said before, when it rains really hard in a short period of time, we get flooding on Lake Park Boulevard and Second Avenue. And these photos here kind of help illustrate that. At some points, Lake Park Boulevard can flood up to five feet deep in the intersection, which is very dangerous. Second Avenue gets to be about a foot, a foot and a half deep. So, it's, it's dangerous to vehicles. And it's costly to property owners in the areas. So, what happens primarily is that our storm sewer system is not sized to take all that water and get it out of there fast enough. And in Lake Park Boulevard, it also is kind of a bowl, if you will. It's the low spot in that street. And the water, it, there's only one drain in there. So it has to wait and go out like if you drain your bathtub. There's only one way for that water to get out. So that's another part of the problem. So when it rains hard, it fills up fast and it can't get out fast. On Second Avenue, that one has other restrictions that cause the water to flow over the road as opposed to underneath the road. And that's why we had those flooding issues there. So, what, what we had Watersmith Engineering do was, is kind of dig into why this happens. What is, you know, what are the areas that contribute to this? And what are some possibilities to do to mediate these, these problems? So, they did a, they did a watershed assessment and hydrologic, hydrologic report. Excuse me, I'm in a hurry, I guess. And basically, what we found out, it's kind of what we already knew, is that when, the higher the intensity of the rainfall, the deeper the water gets on the streets, which kind of makes sense, right? There's nowhere else for it to go. We also determined that we, that we cannot eliminate all the flooding on Lake Park or Second Avenue. There's just, there's just not a good way to do that for every event. We can get really close and we can do a really good job and make some improvements. But there's no be-all, end-all solution to this, especially with the rain events that we get these days. And I'll go into that a little bit more. There are several options that we have available to us to help mitigate these areas. And we'll discuss those briefly. And, but just so you know, that the more we try to eliminate, the more flooding we try to get to, the higher the cost goes, as those things escalate, you know, together. So, just briefly on the hydrology report. I didn't want to get into too much detail because it's not everybody, you know, it's not everybody's cup of tea. But I did want to briefly touch on the percentage of rainfall events. This, this is brought up a lot and it's throughout the report. And it's basically recurrent, basically, we're talking about odds here, right? It's percentages and odds. So, 100% chance of rainfall, of 100% chance storm means it's about once every year that storm will happen. Okay, that's, that's your normal rain. And that rain is about 2.6 inches in a day, 24 hours, okay? Your 1% chance, or your quote-unquote 100-year storm is seven and a half inches roughly in 24 hours. There's a lot of issues with this terminology, right? Because it's a 100-year storm, people think, oh, it's only going to happen once every 100 years. What it really is, it's a 1% chance. There's a 1% chance of this storm happening during, during a rainfall event. Not every year. It could be every day, right? It could be, anytime there's a rainfall event, there's a 1% chance that it'll be that much rain in 24 hours. Okay? And that's in this area, that those numbers vary throughout the country. So, there's 100% chance when it rains that it could be up to 2.6 inches of rain per 24 hours. So, I just want to kind of help explain that. Hopefully, that helps. If there's questions on that, we can kind of go into that more detail if you need to. But what, typically, what your storm sewer is sized to is a five-year rain event, okay? The 20% chance storm. So that's able to handle about three, almost four inches of rain in a day. The problem, as you are probably all well aware, sometimes we get that much rain in an hour or two, right? And that, all bets are off at that point. So that's why we're having these flash flood events, because we don't have our sewers sized. And nobody, you can't afford to do that. Nobody can afford to do that, to size them to take that much rain in that short amount of time. It's just, it's, it's not practical, it's not feasible. You could build a 100-year storm sewer, but it's going to cost you 10 times, or 20 times, or 100 times more than it would cost to build a five-year sewer. So that's why we draw that line at that number. It's a reasonable, rational number. And then the event that it can't, the sewer can't take it, the street is designed to take the water to the crown of the road so that you still have one lane passable. The problem that we're having on Lake Park and Second Avenue is that, at Lake Park, there's a bowl, so it can't get out. And at Second Avenue, it acts similarly. So it just, it's overwhelmed quickly. And that's what we're going to try to, hopefully try to fix. So, I'm, I'm going through this briefly. You guys have the report. And, and we can talk about any questions you have after that, I mentioned that. We did ask Watersmith to give us some alternatives and to put some costs with those. These costs do contain engineering, admin costs, as well as easements where those might be required. So these numbers are accurate today. Nothing's going to be the same tomorrow or the next day. And you guys know how the prices are going for everything. But just briefly, the alternatives I want to talk about. Alternative one is to remove the intake structure east of Second Avenue. Alternative one is to remove the intake structure east of Second Avenue, so that basically makes that hole bigger, so that the water can go underneath the road and not pond up and go over the road. And then also, with some storm sewer work on there to add more intakes and bigger pipes to get underneath the road so that we can drain that up. Alternative one is only for Second Avenue, that's the only one that, that does. It doesn't help anything at Lake Park Boulevard, it just helps that one spot. So, that cost for that one is, is a one-and-done, one project. The rest of those, alternatives two through seven, are designed to help on Lake Park Boulevard. Alternatives two through five are individual projects, and then alternative six and seven are combinations of projects. So, there's a, alternative two is to create a ditch in a storm sewer on, at Summit Avenue, which would be the, the east or the south side of Lake Park Boulevard, kind of at the low spot, to basically divert the water off of the street into a ditch and get it to Mad Creek. Alternative three is to create a storm sewer at, up, at the corner of Lake Park, about 701, and shoot that water in a pipe to Mad Creek, and basically catches it before it gets to the low point and gets it, and bypasses it. Alternative four is similar to that, but the bypass goes through the all-steel property. And then, alternative five is the detention based on the DOT parcel, which, if you read the report, it helps in combination, but as a standalone, it doesn't really help us out that much at Lake Park Boulevard. And then six and seven, like I mentioned, are combinations of multiple options to get those numbers where we want them to be, those elevations. So, the next slide is, is the one that's pretty much the bread and butter of the, of the report. And as I mentioned before, alternative one is solely for Second Avenue, so the numbers there don't really affect us much on this slide. But if you look at the circled numbers there, 572, that's the elevation at the bottom of Lake Park Boulevard. So, anything above 572 is water on the street, okay? And 575 is the elevations of the garage floors in the garages on the houses at Lake Park Boulevard. So, anything above 575, there's water in the, in the house, all right? So, if you follow across the, the table, this is where the decisions, we have to decide how much, how much we want to bite off and what level of service that we want to provide. So, alternative two, the ditch on Summit, it gets us, all those, at every rainfall event, the five-year, the 10-year, the 20-year, or the 20, 10, and 1% chance storm, it gets us out of the basements, all right? That's a good thing, and that's relatively low cost to do that. Now, I can't stand here and say that this is gonna guarantee they'll never have water in a basement, because I, I can't say that and I won't say that. But, the calculations indicate that we can prevent that with that option. What it doesn't do is get the water off of Lake Park Boulevard. So, at the 100-year storm, you're still gonna have almost two feet of water on Lake Park Boulevard, if we just do alternative two, okay? That's where the additions and the other, other options, alternatives, come in, and we get those increased benefits by combining these things. So, alternative three is, is also takes care of the basements. It's a little bit higher cost. Alternative four takes care of everything. Well, not everything to the 100-year, it takes care of the, of the flooding at the 20, or the five-year, in the 10-year storm, but it doesn't take care of the house flooding at the 100, no, it doesn't, takes care of the house flooding, but not at the, but not the road flooding at the 100-year event. And it's expensive. Alternative five, then, is a combination, which will get us down to almost everything. Basically, the best one there, to get the most bang for your buck is alternative, not bang for your buck, to get the most water off the street is alternative seven, which combines three and five. However, if you notice, 52-point, 572.4 is still four tenths of a foot, which is about five inches of water on Lake Park Boulevard at the 100-year event. So, no matter what we do with these probable solutions here, we still can't get that water off the street completely, unless we do something completely different, right? Or, or like take the houses out and swale through there. So, that's not on here, we didn't want to study that. But this is where we are with our, with our study, kinda told us what we kinda thought we knew, but it's better than what we did internally. I'm rambling, I apologize. So, to summarize briefly, like I said before, alternative one will eliminate this, the street flooding on Second Avenue for the 20% annual chance of a five-year rain event, which is, uh, I'd say that's pretty substantial compared to what we have right now. Usually what we get, when we get a flash flood, it's about that two-inch rainfall event in an hour, or the five, or the five-year rainfall event in an hour or two that causes that flooding. This should be able to protect us from that. Anything over that, then we run the risk of having water on the road again, but it's a lot less than it is currently. Alternative two helps us reduce the flooding into the homes on Lake Park Boulevard for all the storm events, which is significant because that is a relatively low-cost option. And so, what we recommend as staff is to do alternative one, if, if we choose to do this, if you guys choose to do this, and budget for this, to do alternative one and alternative two. I think that gives us the most bang for our buck for these two things. Right now, these aren't budgeted projects. I've talked to our finance director, and we may be able to find that money in the collection and range budget. We may be able to bond for it, there may be other options to try to find funding for it, but as of today, they're not budgeted. We are still in budget season, so we could re-divert some fundings if we needed to, but that's, that's where we stand today, and staff's recommendation, like I said, is one and two. I think that gets us, I think that's a pretty good, I don't know if it's a compromise, it's, I think that's, I think that's a good effort to make for the city for these, for this issue here. I hope that made sense. I feel like I stumbled through that, and I apologize, I was trying to get through it quickly because we've been here for a while.
So, if I can just, so I think the sort of high level there is that the, the, you get diminishing rates of return on the investment. So, what Brian is saying is those two, first two have the most impact for the least cost. None of the solutions fully mitigate the problem, none of them do. I just want to be clear about that, yeah.
And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them for you. If not, I have the author of the report, and it's like I said, our city engineer's here as well, and you'll fire away.
Brian, one of the things you didn't mention was, if we do one and two, and then there is a major flood event, you had some options that you were looking at to try to close Lake Park to keep traffic from going down into that area, and those be soft solutions to at least?
Yeah, I, I mentioned that in the, in the memo, right? There are some capabilities for that. You can, they, they do have like float devices in the catch basins where when it triggers a certain level, it'll trigger a sign that says, you know, water over road, do not enter, things like that. That is something that we could do, that's a little bit less expensive to at least alert the public that there's, you know, water over the road. It's, it's much more rapid than having a police officer go out there and, and, you know, observe it, or get called, and then hit a roadblock, whatever, so it's something that we could look into doing, for sure, yes.
I'm for manual, put up a roadblock, though, too, to save some lives, so I'm not worried about that.
Yeah, this, this would be that more immediate trigger, right? So that we know. And then, and I believe they even have radio ability where they could call us and say, hey, okay, you need to go out here and inspect this and then take necessary action, so.
But you were looking at those things, so this isn't just this, I mean, the study's great.
No, no, these are, the study tells us what the water does when it rains a certain amount, all right? And where that water goes, and where that water's coming from. The solutions or alternatives that are, that we can build, these are other things that they don't solve the problem, but they do help alert the public. They're not necessarily, you know, they're not a solution to the rainfall or the runoff problem, but they do alert the public to it, yes. So, there are options for those.
Brian, I just want to say thanks for looking at this. I actually, was actually having coffee and ran into Dustin and Kristen Bullard. They live at 715 Lake Polk Park Boulevard, and they were telling me how they've been in contact with you and how open you are at listening to this, and, and it's pretty dramatic. They informed me that when it does rain, it's immediate flooding, it's, and they've lost a lot. So, I want to say thank you for looking at this and bringing this to the council's attention.
Okay, I appreciate your time, thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian. All right, the last item on the agenda is going to be presented by our city administrator regarding animal control regulations. And Captain Keys.
Bear with me here, I have to pull mine up on my iPad here. It's the first and the last. Okay, so now we're gonna talk about another section of animal code, Title VI, Chapter 8, which is the bulk of the animal code. And if you recall, do I have a slide on, at the October 13th meeting?
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth, okay. Council gave direction to city staff to develop new amended animal regulation code. It's staff suggestion, but I think council also knew that it was time to update that code. And so, so Tony, Captain Keys, and I, and the new animal control officer, who is also here, Courtney, have been working on this a little bit, and so we're here tonight to present to you our recommendations, I guess. And I, I want to thank staff, and, and kudos to Courtney. She's, she's new, she got thrown in the, thrown in the deep end on animal control, and, you know, she dug right in and apparently was doing her homework over the weekend and emailing Captain Keys.
She will.
So, thank you to Courtney for that. So, the questions that we're asking tonight is, one, just basically, do you have any questions on what we're gonna present? Do you support the recommended changes that we're proposing? And do you think we should explore, explore any additional options? Again, strategic alignment, we talked about this in October. We have a priority of having a safe community. We say that we'll provide exceptional public safety and community services so that our residents can live, work, and play here safely, and that we want to meet or exceed our community's expectations regarding the quality and level of our emergency services. I just, I, we talked about this in October, too, but I want to reiterate that it is well within the city's authority to regulate the keeping of animals, and frankly, we have pretty broad authority to do it. We, it's a valid exercise of our powers. We can control dogs and other pets and animals to protect and regulate against threats, the threats that those animals may pose to people. That's exactly why we do this, is for health and safety. We have animal regulations now, and most cities do, that put requirements on pet ownership, things you can't do, prohibited acts, cruelty nuisance, regulating dangerous and vicious animals, which is a big topic, obviously, tonight and has been, and then how we enforce and control, how we enforce the code and how we control animal and the pet population in the community. We can have, there is state law in this, and I know that the animal control officer, she came in my office and she had the, the state code with her. She carries it with her, so that she knows the laws that she's enforcing. And she, we can have laws that are exactly what the state is, or we can have higher, apply a higher standard, because animal control's a local issue, and that's why the state allows that. And so, again, we have the two codes, Chapter 8 and Chapter 9. We've regulated animal ordinance as a musketeen for over, over 100 years, probably. But most recently, we've amended them several times since 1982. We added dangerous animals, requirements on rabies, at-large animals licensing fines, and then in 2003, we adopted the keeping of pit bull ordinance, but we've really not had any major updates to the code since that time. And just a reminder that animal control services is organized under the police department. They have the authority in the code, the appeals process goes through the police chief. They regulate keeping of animals and enforcing the code, and they provide not only enforcement, but a lot of public education and proactive programs such as vaccination clinics. Our previous ACO was, had a feral cat program, I don't know if we'll continue that, but we've done a lot of things like that, so they do provide a vital public service. So, the broad categories of changes we're proposing tonight are in those that are listed here around registration and licensing, animal care. We've, we're proposing that we add an irresponsible or reckless animal owner provision, being a little bit more explicit on what a dangerous or vicious dog is, some tethering code, which we do not have now, and then a change in our fines structure. And if you have questions, I don't know, Mayor, you can have them jump in, or we can wait till the end, whatever you prefer. So, animal registration.
Wait until the end.
Okay, great. Animal registration, why do you register your pets? It's so we can quickly identify them and return them to the owner. We get a better handle on how many pets we actually have in the city, and then it also allows our animal control officer to determine the vaccination status of the animal, which is important. Currently, we require dogs and cats that are six months of age or older to be licensed, and you can only purchase a license at City Hall in Finance. The annual fee for an unaltered pet is $25, $15 for owners that are 65 and older, and for an altered pet, it's $5. This is an, this is an annual fee, $3 if you're 65 and older. So, all we're proposing to change here is to add the word designate in the code to allow people to purchase license at a place other than at the Department of Finance. And the, Tony and his crew have already done some research on this. We're looking at some potential online options. We're researching a few other things. So, if council would decide to add designate to the code, there would be an implementation process. There may be some cost to it. I don't think it's gonna be extraordinary, but there will be a little bit of cost to it. And we would, we would propose that we offer, for a period of time, a free licensing period to get animal, the estimate of the animal population, and then, following that period of time, we increase the fee to cover the costs of the program, and that's typical and appropriate. Do you want to add something?
Just keep in mind, currently, we have around 400 pet licenses out in the city. And as Peggy and I are working with numbers, and we're trying to talk to local vets in town and get a number, you have somewhere between 12,000 to 20,000 animals in the city. So, what we're trying to do is educate and be able to have numbers that will allow Courtney to do her job, get the pet back to the right owner, and also, we know that the animal is vaccinated, so that's our goal with that.
For animal care, basically, it's we want pets, animals in our community to be treated humanely, and we want to ensure that they receive a minimum standard of living. And currently, the code, we do have code on this. It says that animals must be provided sufficient and proper food, water, shelter, care, but there's no definition of what sufficient and proper is. And so, the proposed change would be that we would add, change the word sufficient and proper to adequate, and that we would define what adequate is. And there, in your materials, there are very clear descriptors of what that means, and in talking with, with the team, that they feel like the changes that we're suggesting would strengthen the code and reduce some subjectivity in how they apply it, so it would be an improvement. The irresponsible owner provision, the rationale is that you identify and penalize those, those people who are chronic irresponsibly, you know, irresponsible owners, and that you penalize them in that way. And typically, how these codes go, many communities have these, that you violate the code X number of times, X number of occasions over a certain period of time. We do not have this provision in city code, so we would propose that we add, that, add a clause defining an irresponsible owner as someone who has violated the control codes one or more times on four separate occasions within a rolling 12-month period. We would want to develop an appeals process, though, because that's a pretty, it's a, it's a pretty big consequence to be, basically, the penalty is that you can't own an animal in musketeen. And you also get assessed fines, and it revokes your, your rights for a period of time, and so it should be a high bar to prove that, right? And so, we would propose that we add that, and Tony can elaborate, but I understand, we do typically, depending on the severity of the violation, seek to educate them first, right?
Absolutely. This will definitely create a little more work, but at the end, would be necessary for what we're looking to do. So, I'll give you an instance. In the last week, we responded to your residents, you have three cats, and currently, what we charge for minimum fine of a cat, you're charged for not having a city license for each animal, and you're also charged for not being vaccinated. So, we're focusing right away on the safety part, which would be the vaccination, and then the pamphlet and the education on the city licensing. So, we're trying to reach as many people as we can, and essentially, your warning goes into part of your, one or more times in four separate occasions, so it's more like five separate occasions, but we would keep track of that to make all that work.
Okay, so dangerous dogs, we talked, this is a slide from the last time we discussed this. Generally speaking, cities use one of these three tools to regulate dangerous animals, either breed-specific prohibition, which is what we have for the pit bull breeds, breed-specific restrictions, which we talked about, you're allowed to have a certain breed, but you have to get a special permit, they have to be, you know, neutered, they have to be microchipped, those kinds of strings attached. And then the final one is based, basically, behavior-based regulation, which is what we're proposing here. We do have a dangerous animal provision currently, but it's not specific to dogs, and basically, there are, it's a, it's a, basically, you, if your dog is deemed dangerous, correct me if I'm wrong, Tony, it's appealable to council, but the penalty includes seizure, impoundment, and disposition. Is that right?
That is correct.
So, what we would propose is that we add additional definition for a dangerous dog and a vicious dog. If your animal, a dangerous dog would be defined as a dog who, on public or private property, which is a change here, that we believe either poses an imminent threat, has attacked another animal, or bites someone, but not, but is not a vicious dog, has not viciously bit somebody, would be considered a dangerous animal. And their requirements would be that the animal has to be spayed, neutered, they have to be in a safe and enclosed... to be in a safe and enclo, safe and appropriate enclosure, there's restrictions on who can walk them and how long the leash can be. You can see it all here, microchipped, all that kind of thing. So there, the animal is not removed. We've had situations like this before council, where an animal maybe has bitten somebody, but not viciously so. And it's, it's like zero to 100, like, on the penalty, right? And so this would give some gradation to that. Now, a vicious dog is someone who, on public or private property, and without provocation or justification, bites or attacks someone and causes them serious injury. Then that dog, that has serious penalties. And that would be, you cannot keep, possess, or harbor a vicious dog within the city. The dog can be euthanized. There would be appeal process, as there is today. There's an appeal process now for this. And then, if you don't comply, you get your rights revoked as a, as a pet owner. There is a, there's a standard to be met here, and how a dog can be declared dangerous or vicious. This is some of what folks were talking about earlier that is not in the pit bull code. There's not a, like, how is it, how is it determined, other than, now it just says looks, right? But you can, these are the kinds of things that can cause your dog to be declared dangerous or vicious. And those are actually enumerated in code. And then there are some exemptions, if they're protecting a person that's being attacked, or they're defending their home, if they're unnecessarily provoked. Those are all things that can be considered in an appeal. Okay, tethering. Tethering is basically tying an animal up outside to restrict its movement. You'll often see this with a rope or a chain, and it, frankly, it poses serious health and safety risks for the animal and for people. Because dogs like this tend to be, that are chained, tend to be more aggressive. Their high risk factor data is out there to suggest that, and serious dog bites and attacks. We do not have a provision on tethering. So what we would propose is that we add one, that you cannot tether a dog greater than 10 consecutive hours in a 24-hour period, or between the hours of 10 and 6. And I think that's largely because of barking and those kinds of things, right? We would, we would propose that the tether could not be less than 10 feet or more than 50. The tether would have to have swivels on at least one end, and you can't use chains or weights. It has to be something that's designed specifically for this purpose. And you can't have a collar that tightens, like a pinch collar or something that's made to tighten. So those would be provisions. And these are examples that we pull from other codes that I think both Tony and Courtney liked these provisions. So we selected these for this code change. And then finally, the penalties. So right now, in code, you're guilty of a misdemeanor if you violate this code section. And Iowa code stipulates the fine range that you can assess from 105 up to $850. So right now, Tony, do you want to speak to the first offense is 105? Is that right?
Right now, as code reads, the first offense is 65. Because when the code was wrote, it followed 903.1 in the Iowa State Code, which at the time was 65 to, like, $680. Today, because we didn't write language to follow the Iowa State Code, today, 903.1 talks about 105 to $850. So after several conversations with some of our attorneys and even a couple magistrates, they suggested, why don't you follow State Code 903.1 and just simplify that process so you don't have to keep changing it for the first infraction.
So we would incorporate by reference, probably, is what we do. Not state the fine, but say that it's whatever is in the Iowa code, right?
903, yeah.
Yeah. And then we could, we would scale up the fine on the second and subsequent offenses. This is what we're proposing. But I think we could use our, can we use our discretion?
Discretion would be used in all this, along with your warning and your education. Knowing that we also have an irresponsible owner code, that when we get to four offenses that charges have been filed, that they lose the animal. I think as you would educate and write your charges, I mean, as you're here tonight, people don't want to lose their pets. So I think we would gain compliance, and it would be much easier to enforce this law in our city.
Okay, so that's, in summary, these are our recommendations, adding the language we mentioned, the pet fee is sufficient and proper to adequate, the irresponsible owner provision, adding dangerous and vicious dog definitions, the tethering provision, and then changing the penalties. So with that, we'll take questions.
Go ahead.
All at once, please, it's easier.
Who's first?
Doesn't matter.
Nadine.
Nadine, say a word.
I'll go.
House member for it?
Yep. I just got a couple of questions on irresponsible owner and penalties. Right now, it's, we give a warning first. There's no penalty for the warning. They get the education and they get a warning. Is that correct? On the first offense?
Not always. That is our discretion on who we're dealing with. Is it the first time we've talked to them, and the 10th time their dog's been out? There's a lot of factors that go into play with that. Our discussion on warning is that if we can educate the community on, especially when we roll out new ordinances, if we can educate them on what we're trying to do, and then when you go into having to cite them or find them, it seems like we have better buy-in, even from our community members, when Courtney has to deal with them, or myself.
Okay. Well, my thought on it is if we're giving a warning to start with on the first offense, and giving them the education at that same time, why do we need four times? I think that's too many times. I think if we went down to the warning and three additional at the max, and then set the fine rate based on the second offense, rather than the warning offense.
So with that particular ordinance, just understand that the penalty at number four is removing the dog out of your house.
And that's what I'm saying, it should be done on number three, because you're already giving them the warning. Otherwise, you're giving them five chances instead of three or four.
Absolutely, we are.
Yep, that's my recommendation.
So you're, you're recommending, is this on?
I can't, it doesn't sound like it.
He shut me off. He said, you've talked enough.
Finally.
We, so you're suggesting that we change the irresponsible ownership definition from four occasions to three occasions?
Three occasions. With the first one, actually, it's four, but it's got to be defined as a warning on the first one with no penalty. The second, third, and fourth are where our penalties fall in.
Okay.
And on the fourth, on the fourth time, the pet is removed.
We can, I mean, if, we can look at that. I think that's a poss, I think I'd want to look and see if there, if, what's sort of out there. Like, what do other cities do? If that's quite a departure, I'd want to know it, but, yeah.
That's fine. Look into it.
I, I agree with Dennis. Because if you, you're giving some clown, you know, ample opportunity to fix his ways, and they don't do it, that dog is better off with somebody else instead of them. And I would also like to know, just for my own edification, what our animal lovers in the crowd think of this change? Is it up or down? All right.
Like a thumbs up.
Okay, thank you.
My question was, I, I'm listening to you talk about licensing and things like that, which I think is great. Would there be a database that not only Police Department could have, but the Fire Department as well, so that when they would come to the house that's burning, they would know how many animals are in that house?
We're currently working on being able to push that out, so Animal Control.
Okay.
You probably could. And Animal Control isn't working, it seems, when we have fires at night. And we could probably push that out, so at least the supervisors would have that. That's something that can be done. We just would have to get the proper software to make that work.
That's a great question, Angie. I've asked the same thing in the past, because Animal Control didn't have access to the information, which made it difficult for them to do their job, or the police didn't, for a different purpose.
Sure.
Same with the fire. So, but my, my comments are, first, I want to thank the city staff involved with the research and information you provided us tonight. This is exactly what we asked for in October. We had hoped for the information in December, but there was a lot of research to be done. I mean, we've got more than we actually asked for. So I can understand why we took that a little extra time. It was a one-month delay. This is great information. And I think you've got us going down the right path. So it's the right foundation. Again, this is the pet ownership responsibility that we keep talking about. It is not the pit bull. That's a separate topic, let's just be clear with that. But it's building that foundation that we've asked for. And I think we're on the right track. I love seeing the licensing. I love the tethering. And the tethering code didn't seem outlandish. It was well thought out. You know, wasn't, you can't be 24 hours, 10 hours is eight hours, six hours, but you made it very reasonable. So thank you for all the hard work, but now it's our responsibility to keep this moving forward, and asking for you to come back with the actual code so we can start voting on it, moving it, and implementing it.
Excellent. Just one quick question. It's, you know, there's, with the warning, the first offense, second offense, third offense, whether it's four or not, is it, there's a number of things that could be in violation. Can I be in a second warning in one part of the code, and a first warning in another? Or is it, whatever it is, it's progressive?
So I wouldn't get so wrapped up into the warning and the second, and third, and fourth offenses, because that will be very subjective to our discretion. So when you're out walking your dog with your seven-year-old, and the dog pulls out of the, the leash out of the hand, I don't think that serves as a warning for an irresponsible owner, rather than maybe stopping them if they didn't have a pet license and educating them. So I think that it will all be subjective to the type of call Courtney has called to, or we handle on a rolling calendar 12-month basis.
Okay, but I, maybe, so let's say my first offense has to do with tethering.
Okay.
And I get a warning. And then I do tethering again, I get a first offense, which comes with a penalty. But then later, I, I don't know, I bring in another animal that's not registered. Does that bring me to my third warning? Or is that a new, or a third offense? Or is that my new warning?
So your question is, if I have an animal that's not being tethered properly, and you have a warning?
Yep. And I do it again, I get second.
And you do it again, you get a citation.
Yep.
And then you buy another animal.
Right.
And we have another issue. That, in my opinion, should be consecutive every time we go, no matter if you have one or 20 animals.
Yep, I agree.
If that makes sense.
It's that pet ownership.
So it's all about the irresponsible pet owner, not per one pet. It would be about, it is collectively as a whole.
Yeah, so I move to my third warning, even though it's a different type of, it's all the, it's all offensive of the, of the same code.
You will also get a pamphlet when you're getting your warning, that you will know what our, our regulations are to each animal. So you will not only have had a warning on tethering, but you will also be educated on licensing and other, you know, vaccinations in our city. So it won't be a surprise to you when you get another animal, is what you need to do with that animal. So I would say one warning would be your sufficient.
Yeah, one warning for one thing, and then education on everything. And I can't have, like, multiple different levels of warnings going on, it's just one progression all, all the way through.
That will still stay somewhat subjective.
Okay.
I have one more question. I have one more question, I promise, and then I won't ask anymore. So what are we going to do regarding educating Muscatine citizens regarding licensing and things like that? Are we sending, thinking about like a, a campaign to let everybody know, other than just city council?
So licensing is, that's one of our big ones that we're really working to improve. I think you're going to see some more group efforts this year with Courtney, as well as the Humane Society and Peggy. And we'll push it out on city social media, as well as the Police Department's Facebook page. And I would think with the numbers, we should very easily be able to gain more licensing. So we can know if you have an animal that's in your house and you have a house fire, or there's one loose, what we're looking for.
Thank you.
I have a question for you, Carol. Are there any communities that are doing a lifetime license, basically? I just...
You know, I like that idea, because you, it's a hassle to register your dog every year. The trick is that we need the records. So I would, I, you know, I, I'll have to do some legwork on that. And I don't know, Tony, if you know that, I...
So, none that I know of. The first year after that, what they're, what we're using in Muscatine is three-year vaccination for rabies. So I could see three years being pretty easily obtained when you purchase your license or permit. And how you want to implement that fee, whether you want to triple the current fee, or just do a set fee, if somebody brings you the proper documentation, would all be up to council.
Yeah, it just seems like the most ideal situation would be a lifetime, and it's just idea, but a lifetime license, one-time cost. And if there's a way to somehow have some buy-in from local veterinarians, Humane Society, where if you go to these places, you buy it, and then there's a database where it goes to the animal control officer, the finance department, you know, and all of a sudden, you have all that information.
I like the idea. I, we'd have to think about if you could execute it. Yeah, go ahead, Peggy.
Well, I asked, that was a great idea. And so I put the question out there to a resource who's been helpful to us, and that's Preston Moore, asking him if he was aware of a lifetime licensure. And he put it out to his group, and no one is aware of that currently. And part of it is keeping up with the vaccine records, which is critical. It's not to say we can't think outside the box, but I think we need to tread that one cautiously, and see what we can do.
Yeah, I mean, I was just thinking, if all of a sudden, they go to the, they get a vaccination, just automatically updating the database, like typical medical records.
Oh, I am all for selling it at the vet offices. But the lifetime is, I think, where we have to be cautious. But it's, it's worth a discussion.
Yes. What's, what's the penalty if they don't license? I mean, we're going to have a lot of responsible owners that are going to come in and get their license, and get this taken care of right off the bat. But what about the ones that are irresponsible, that are going to hide their animals because they don't want to pay the $5 or $25? What are we going to do about that? How is that going to be enforced?
They will be given their warning and educated, and then it will be $105 every animal the first time. We, our code currently allows us to go from a base fee to a maximum fine. And that is why Carol had put up here a proposal that the second fee be $210, or not double, but a half again as much as the first time. So then your impact from fee two and three, because the fourth time, you're an irresponsible owner at that point in time. So you would start out at 105, and you would progress to like 350 for your third citation. So it behooves you not to get a city license, just merely on a financial request, because right now, they're very low.
And that's, that's my issue, too. I think it should be high enough and big enough that it, everybody licenses their pet, period. I don't care if it's $500. If you fail to license your pet, it's $500.
I also think there, you know, if, any kind of action, obviously, there's got to be some kind of well-thought-out campaign also, where there is no excuse throughout the whole city, and, you know.
Yeah, well, that's why we were thinking, you know, kind of brainstorming, that we could do a free licensing event in conjunction with a vaccination clinic and other things. But we will definitely, we won't just spring this on people. We'll, we'll do some outreach. We'll reach out to some of our local, you know, It Takes a Village and other groups that work with animals and Humane Society.
Yeah, we'll work with folks. The first hurdles, we had to get it so that it opened it up from just the finance department being the only one that could sell it.
Yeah.
And that's, that's our first hurdle, and now we can work through things. Because a lot of it's education. At the vaccine clinics, at the Humane Society, and the animal control officer did, when I stopped people, and I did stop them, after they got their rabies vaccine, they weren't aware. And it's a, it's a $5 fee for most. So a lot of it's awareness education, and we have a lot to go on there. And I like the idea of a, a break from it, and try to get our numbers up there, so we can get as many people licensed as possible, and get them in that habit and knowledgeable, so.
Hey, would like to say something?
Of course you can.
Okay. I hope we can, first of all, thanks, Officer Keys and the city staff, Courtney, for all your work. I, I want to just encourage us to be extremely aggressive with how we determine, decisive, aggressive, and firm on how we proceed with, I think, even further description of what a vicious dog is. And I also am, I'm really curious about the tethering. Am I reading this correctly? You can only keep your dog on a leash for no more than 10 hours?
That's right.
Not a leash.
Pardon me? A tether.
It was a tether.
A tether. Tie, a tether. Not more than 10 hours on a tether.
You can't, you can't...
Outside, yeah. That's incredible. I, I can't imagine, I suppose there are situations where, you know, the good old dog lays in the backyard, you know, and he happens to be, he or she happens to be on a leash, and, you know, they got a doghouse with shade, but that's... a leash, and, you know, they got a doghouse with shade, but that dog, you know, that dog doesn't bother anybody. But a dog that's in the city limits, and it's spinning around on a chain for 10 hours, and that's legal? I can't believe that.
Currently, it is.
I can't believe that.
There is no tethering law right now.
So this is what I'd like to throw out. It's kind of a, well, I think it's a, one hour. You can't have your dog on a leash for more than one hour. That way, our animal control officer ties up an hour and five minutes. And if that dog is on a leash for more than an hour and five minutes, and it's in a yard where it is chasing around at the end of its leash and barking at everybody and that kind of thing, it can do that for an hour and fi, one minute, and then citation. And we've only tied up one of her hours of time, or a police officer's period of time. I can't imagine being a dog, obviously. But I, I just, all the dogs I've been around and dogs I've had and that kind of thing, I cannot believe.
The, the reason it's 10, and there are varying, some codes I think did have.
We need to toughen that tethering law up.
Yes.
Can I just explain, one, why we picked 10, but maybe why four would be acceptable as well? So in the tethering, if you would adopt all of the ordinances which we proposed in here, and the irresponsible owner, and the one prior to that, and I'm drawing a blank, you can't tie that dog up without proper water, shelter, food.
Adequate.
Adequate, adequate. But it allows people to go to work if they're working a 10-hour shift or an eight-hour shift. Or some people have a lunch break. So if they go to work, and four hours later, they come back home and they want to let their dog out before they get back, it allows some leeway if they're properly taking care of their animal. That is why it was left like that, but.
We could look at a shorter term, though. We could, yeah.
Get up in the morning, take care of your dog, come home for lunch, let it out for a little bit, whatever you need to do.
We could look at four.
Leave a dog on a tether.
Anybody else have any questions?
No way would I, you know, I don't think anyway. I've said no way a lot in my life, you know? And I went ahead and gone the other way, but.
Thank you, Captain Keys.
You bet.
Councilmember Lewis, do you have anything you'd like to share tonight?
No, just thank you to everybody and, you know, city administrator and those that put the vicious ban information out. Thank you for the animal control officer. I know she's kind of been at the crosshairs, and it's really not about you. It's about making sure we're, we're listening to the residents and making sure that their voices are heard. So, but thank you for all that you do. I don't want you to discredit what you do at all. It's a hard job, so thank you.
Councilmember Hopkins.
Nothing, sir.
Councilmember Gordon.
I'm sorry, yeah, that's all right. You've heard a lot from me, but I was asked by senior resources, just to remind everybody about their trip fundraiser, the deadline's coming up, January 19th, and as with most of our social services, they could use all the fundraising help. So please keep that in mind. And they're also looking for more chore workers. If you're looking to shovel some snow, they, they raise their rate, so, thank you.
Councilmember Pralik.
I just wanted to thank the staff and everybody that worked on all these codes, the changes that we're doing to it, because it's an important thing, and, and it's long overdue. And I'd also like to remind the citizens that this is a long process. It's not an easy process. We're trying to do what's right and what's best for the community, for the safety and health and the well-being of everybody. So please be patient and let us do our job. Thank you.
Councilmember Brockard.
I'd like to echo Dennis's sentiments, and I would also like to thank all of you who mustered up the courage to come up to the podium and state your concerns. We heard you. Please work with us, because it does take time. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Gindrich.
Nothing, Mayor.
All right. Councilmember Osborne.
I'd like to, again, echo the thanks that, for the participation, participation of the folks that came tonight, and the ones that have came before you, and the persistence. This is the way it works. I mean, and I appreciate that. That's all I got.
Cinda? Carol?
So can I just make sure I know what I heard? Can I just restate back to council what I think we're going to work on?
Of course.
Okay, just want to make sure I get the right direction. So we're going to look at the, the 10-hour? Do you want us to look at the 10-hour to 4-hour? What do, I, I just need to know what to bring back.
I think 10 hours is long.
For, we.
I brought it up. I guess my input is absolutely.
Is that what council, is that the direction you'd like me to look at?
Yes, yes, please.
I think 10 hours is too long, too.
Yeah, it's a long time.
And there was one other thing that you asked about.
The time limit, the four days, one day.
Oh, yes. Yes, yes. Okay, and we'll reduce that to three occasions.
Second, third, fourth, third warning, they're done.
Did I miss anything else that you asked for changes?
Well, we talked about the fine schedule, too.
We'll, we'll look at that. Well, I'll figure out how we might look at the applying. I think they already do the, that. That's sort of the policy end.
I'm looking at dollar amounts, especially for the unregistered irresponsible owners, and for the penalties for the third, first, second, and third offense.
So I think what the code would say would be that we would just adopt the Iowa Code by reference. Internally, the policy would be what you're describing. So I don't think that's a code approval. It's more about how the code is implemented. But I think, I think they heard what you said about being aggressive in that. Is that right? I think that's how it would look.
Okay.
But I think your concern will be addressed. When do you want me to bring this back for a reading? Do you want this next week? Are you looking for this next week?
My, my request last week was going to be to see if we can move it forward to next week.
I think we can.
Yes, next week.
I mean, I really do think we can. I mean, it's, we'll have to work tomorrow. Child make Tony work past noon.
Well, it's, uh-oh. For education.
That's a good thing.
They hate it, they hate it when I make them work after afternoon.
It's a three o'clock meeting.
I, I think it's most of the way there, so I think we're in luck.
I want to be specific on the dollar amount, the reference in the Iowa Code. What I want to take away from the department and from Courtney is not have so much subjectivity to the second fine dollar amount. So I want you to tell us what fine number two should be, what fine number three should be, and what fine number four should be. So we're not having to come up with a random number, and then it being too egregious or not enough.
I have an opinion, or whether it's good or not, I have an opinion.
Yeah, sure.
I, I was, like I said before, the first one's a warning with the education. The second time is 250, third time is 400, and the last one's 600.
Wow.